Hello. Thank you for tuning into the 2025 General Election Candidate Forum for the Lacey City Council. This forum is presented by the League of Women Voters of Thurston County in collaboration with Thurston County Community Media. The League of Women Voters is proud to be nonpartisan, neither supporting nor opposing candidates or political parties at any level of government, but always working on vital issues of concern to members and the public to defend our democracy and empower voters. I am Golden Neal with the League, and I will be moderating this forum. Barbara Byron is our timer. According to their website, Lacey City Council's primary duties are to make laws, adopt regulations and budgets, levy taxes, authorize public improvements, provide for public safety and health, approve board and commission appointments, and oversee a wide-ranging agenda of the community of Lacey. We have candidates from three positions here with us. Today, Marin Turner is running for, to represent Position Four. Position Six will be represented by either Yvette Temple or Ryan Seeu, and Carolyn Cox is running for Position Seven. Charles Beck, running against Marin Turner for Position Four, was invited but unable to attend, and Michael Stedman, who is running against Carolyn Cox for Position Seven, was invited and declined to attend and did not submit a written statement. We stress the importance of civility in our forums. Candidates have received the ground rules for the forum and have agreed to abide by them. Beginning with Marin, the first question is, why are you running for Lacey City Council?
Thank you, and hello, neighbors. I am Marin Turner. I'm running for Lacey City Council because I want to expand the public service that I already provide for this city that I love so much. I'm coming not just as a candidate, but as a person who has decades of experience, leadership experience, community service experience, and I also have the passion that can keep this community moving forward. As your City Councilwoman, I will be sure to listen to your voices. I want to hear the voices of the 70% of us who've been here for less than 20 years, as well as the voices of people who describe themselves as lifelong residents, because I think we need to hear all of those voices. I'm inviting you to follow me at MarinTurner.com, or just type in Marin Turner for Lacey. I'd love to hear from you. Your voice, your choice, is my focus, and so I look forward to talking to you along the campaign trail. Thank you.
Ryan?
Hello. My name is Ryan Seeu. I am a candidate for Lacey City Council, Position Six. I'm running for Lacey City Council because I believe that, as Lacey is the largest and most diverse city in Thurston County, we need to be able to push our city forward to be the leader in the region that it needs to be. I believe that we need to work on affordable housing. We need to work on expanding our transportation infrastructure, as well as supporting small businesses, and all of those need to happen with an eye for environmental resilience, as well as an eye for equity. We need to be able to make sure that the most vulnerable of our residents are going to be supported and lifted up, and I know that with your support, we can build a more resilient, inclusive, and vibrant Lacey for future generations. You can follow me at RyanForLacey.com, or you can find me on Facebook. Thank you so much.
Yvette?
Thank you. Well, good afternoon. My name is Yvette Temple, and I have been a resident of Thurston County for the past 16 years. I have been serving the community for the past 16 years in various nonprofit roles, and I've been serving the city of Lacey for over a year now. I was appointed with full confidence of Lacey City Council as a Human Services Commissioner. I believe this is a potentially pivotal time in Lacey. As we continue to grow, our needs are changing, and with my background of 38 years in a financial institution, as well as being balanced out by my lived experiences and my human services dedication, I feel that I bring a well-rounded lived experience to the council. So if you are interested in me and more of my message, please visit my website. It's Yvette with an E, the number four, at Lacey.com. And, sorry, YvetteForLacey.com. Anyways, thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it, and I look forward to serving the city many more years to come.
Carolyn?
Hello. I'm Carolyn Cox, and I have had the honor of serving on the Lacey City Council for eight years now. It has been a time of great opportunities, great challenges for Lacey. As has been mentioned, we have been experiencing rapid growth, and we have become not only Thurston County's largest city, but its most diverse city. I've distinguished myself as a Housing and Climate Champion on the council. I've also worked really hard on transit and on standing up Lacey's Commission on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. In fact, Lacey has kind of led the way for Thurston County on that, and I'm very proud of that effort. So I am asking for your support for one more term and look forward to today's debate.
Thank you. This question is beginning with Ryan. What is the single most challenging issue facing Lacey in 2025?
The single most challenging issue facing Lacey in 2025? I'm going to have to probably go with housing affordability, as it is going to be one of the most immediate things that are felt by our residents, making sure that people have homes that they can afford and that they can continue to live in. But as we expand and we have to meet those needs for housing affordability, we also have to make sure that we are not disregarding the climate change and that we're maintaining our environmental sustainability as we build those houses. We need to make sure we have good tree canopy, that we are maintaining our green spaces, and that we're working to infill, so that way we are not pushed out into the sprawl, and so that way we can maintain farmland as well as our forests. Recently, a survey said that our natural beauty around Lacey was one of our greatest strengths, and we need to preserve that. Thank you.
Yvette?
Yes, thank you. Well, I've been serving on the Board of Homes for the past six years, and this is what my life has been. But I'd like to change the script, and I'm going to say the same thing as Ryan. It is housing, but accessibility, because what's affordable to one person may not be affordable to another, and so we really need to look at our missing middle. And as we continue to grow, this is something that is very, very urgent. We have done City Council, and thank you so much, Carolyn. They did some changes last year to include upzoning for three to six units. We have a serious issue with the missing middle, and so with all my experience that I have around this, I really look forward to getting together with my other council members and members of the community, and as well, you know, there's a whole bunch of people involved with affordable housing. When we increase, thank you.
We'll move on to Carolyn.
I think it's a compound of growth, how we meet that growth, and the funding gap that the city faces. This year, we've been working on our budget, and we're looking at trying to fill like a $2 million shortfall. That's projected to go out to about $9 million within five years, and yet the city is growing, and it will cost more to provide services to these new residents, and yet our income stream is going to be flat. It does present quite the challenge. The other flip side of managing growth and having it happen quickly is not to let it overwhelm and destroy the character of Lacey. So I have been working with our Planning Commission, which is doing our comprehensive plan, encouraging them to look at zoning and trying to keep it orderly and not have collisions of residential and commercial.
Thank you. Marin?
I agree. Housing is one of the most important things we have to get our arms around, because housing is more than just shelter. It's about community. It's about proximity to schools and to work. It's about health, and if we want a very vital and vibrant community, we have to have a healthy community, and so housing, I think, is one of the key pieces to that. I also think that there is more that we can do. I'm concerned about older people, one of the fastest-growing groups to become unhoused, and one of the reasons for that is because they don't have, their houses no longer meet their needs. I'm concerned about teens who become unhoused as well, those that are not supervised by parents or by the city or the state, so we have to do more to support the host families that make it possible for them to have shelter and to have a quality of life.
Thank you. Our next question will begin with Yvette. The public and private sectors are experiencing pressure from the federal government to eliminate commitments to diversity, equity, and inclusion, commonly known as DEI. In light of this, do you think any changes are needed to Lacey's DEI efforts?
Well, actually, I had the opportunity this past week, as a Human Services Commissioner, I was invited to participate with the other municipalities, and it was for their DEI meeting. One thing, though, that I really thought was wonderful is Lacey's not just DEI. We're DEIB, B for Belonging, and I think that we are making tremendous strides. I think regardless of federal pressure, we need to stay the course. As a woman and a Native American, these things run around when I was younger, and I think they're very, very, very important for us to maintain and continue on with the mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn, would you like to answer the question?
I absolutely think we must preserve our community's values, including DEI as well as climate change. This is another thing the federal government is threatening funding on. I was very proud, as Chair of the Inter-City Transit Authority, to be part of the decision where the authority joined a federal lawsuit against the government, which was trying to withhold transit funds unless we removed DEI and climate language from our grants and from our governing documents. Same thing with the Thurston Regional Planning Council. One of my colleague, Robin Vasquez, and I, along with Tom Water, City Councilwoman, Eileen Swarthout, kind of led the effort to rebuff attempts to pull back that language. And I just, we cannot knuckle under to bullying from the federal government. Nothing good ever comes from knuckling under to a bully.
Thank you. Marin?
We absolutely have to stay the course. I am so proud that Lacey has a DEI Commission. I've had the opportunity to sit in on their meetings in person and online, and I think we're moving in the right direction. I've looked at the strategic plan for Lacey. I am very, very proud of the Equity Map that was released earlier this year, and I think there are lots of opportunities for us to not only keep doing what we're doing, but to strengthen our efforts. One of the things that I saw in the strategic plan for DEI for the city is that we need to increase communication from a variety of voices, and as I doorbell and I meet more and more people, I can see where that's definitely a need, that we figure out ways that we can not only bring people in to give us input into the city, but figure out ways we can go to the communities where people are so that we can hear those voices and nobody gets left behind, but we absolutely have to stay the course.
Thank you. Ryan?
Thank you. Yes, I believe that the DEI efforts, DEIB, thank you, efforts that the city is putting forth is a great starting point. I would love to see us increase our efforts in how we communicate and we do outreach with different areas of Lacey. So a little background about myself is that my father was an immigrant from China, and I feel as though like there are certain areas and certain voices that are not reached in the same capacity through the same ways, and so we need to make sure that we are meeting people where they're at, so that way we can incorporate their voices and their opinions in how we do make decisions on the city council. And thank you so much for this question. It's a thing that I hold very dear, and I can't hit my chest because of the mic.
Excuse me. Carolyn, this question is for you. As local governments are facing significant financial challenges, what do you see as Lacey's toughest financial issue?
Well, as I previously mentioned, we see a gap between the amount of revenue the city collects and the expenses. Of course, labor is the largest expense of a city, and our staff and our council are determined not to have to resort to layoffs. We have been exploring some other income streams, such as utility taxes and other things that we can impose. I think down the line, I think we've, I think we're close to solving the gap this year, but as the gap widens, we're going to have to look down the line at looking at other revenue sources. The city has been good at attracting grant money for parks and some of our facilities, but it's kind of competitive out there, and we can't count on grant money to bail us out.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. I think one of the issues we're going to have to solve is how to increase our revenue stream. I think one of the ways to do that is to bring more businesses to Lacey. I'd like to see us have more destination businesses, businesses that offer something that you can't get anywhere else. You have to come to Lacey to get it. So it's not just, Lacey's not just a place where it's great to live, but it's a place where it's great to arrive. I'd like to see us not be so, I guess, dependent on sales tax and property tax, because that is a regressive tax for people who have low and fixed incomes, and so if we can diversify our revenue streams, I think that would be of a great benefit to Lacey.
Ryan, I invite you to answer the question.
Actually, could you repeat the question?
As local governments are facing significant financial challenges, what do you see as Lacey's toughest financial issue?
All right. Thank you. I would have to say, like, having been at the previous work sessions and hearing them talk about the budget shortfalls that they're facing right now, that one of the biggest issues that we're going to be having is diversifying our revenue streams. I think we can widen our, the businesses and attract more businesses to the city of Lacey, so that way we have a larger tax base. But I also believe that we cannot keep relying on sales tax and property taxes in order to keep meeting the needs of the city. We'll have to look for different ways in order to get that revenue, and as Marin had mentioned, that property taxes and sales tax are regressive, I think that we need to work with other local governments and with our state government as well in order to help diversify what those options are. Thank you.
Yvette?
Thank you. Well, as a commercial banker for 38 years, the finances are somewhat right up my alley, and I agree with my fellow candidates that we cannot continue to rely on the previous streams of revenue that we had. Taxes are having a huge impact, not only in our city, but our state, and we have to think about different ways to do that. As a former board president and board member for what was known as the Lacey, or sorry, Olympia-Lacey-Tom Water Visitor Convention Bureau, I very much agree with Marin about making Lacey more of a destination. There is, we want to keep our families and folks here. If they want to go do things, they tend to go out. They go out of Thurston County, they go out of Lacey, and I have actually been in talks with several people about some ideas to make Lacey more of a destination. We have the heads in beds, it increases revenue, it helps our businesses, and our small businesses really do need no tax.
We need to continue on with our next question, and this will be posed to Marin. How can the city of Lacey collaborate with other jurisdictions to end homelessness in Thurston County?
I think it's important for Lacey to collaborate with other jurisdictions. We can share data, we can share strategies, we can share funding, there are a number of ways that we can look at, how can we end homelessness? I also think it's really important for us to look at how we're defining homelessness and the problem of people being unhoused. I know we take the point-in-time data, but I think the problem of people being homeless or unhoused is bigger than we know, because there are people that couch surf, there are people who may have a domestic violence situation, and they don't want to go back home. And so in order for us to really get our arms around homelessness and people being unhoused, we have to work together, like I said, share the data, share the strategy, share information, and just work together. I love the way our law enforcement works with the MOT team to make sure that we are helping people find services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan?
Thank you. I believe that we need to be able to collaborate with all of the different municipalities in this region, because homelessness is not just affecting Lacey, it's affecting everyone, and because of that, we need to have input from all of them. No one place, no one municipality is going to be able to solve that. There is a great amount of NGOs in our region. Part of that's because we have the Olympia, the capital of the state, is here, and we need to be able to coordinate with them to make sure that as we expand housing, that we have wraparound services for those individuals who are there, so that way they can continue to be successful and they can continue to move on and flourish in our communities. Some of that is going to be through inter-area agreements or inter-localities and working with them to make sure that we are getting people the services that we have available to us, not just in Lacey, but everywhere.
Thank you. Yvette?
Thank you. Well, actually, I really think that this is an area I've been working in for so long, and it's deeply personal to me. We need to put all the egos aside. We need to come together as a collective with every jurisdiction and the tribes as well. If this was an easy fix, it would have been fixed by now. With all the money that has been put in this area, it would have been fixed, so we need a collective collaboration of all the jurisdictions, as well as the tribes, to talk about what can we do. You know, a lot of things with houselessness is, you know, there's mental illness, there's addiction, there are a lot of things, and we need to do things differently, because what we've been doing is not working. It is just definitely one of those things that we need to come together, and we were just talking about this Monday night at the commission meeting. Thank you.
Carolyn?
All righty. Well, we have such a group, and I'm happy to say I was the co-founder of it. It's called the Thurston Regional Housing Council. We work together, we share policy, we share plans and information, we set priorities for the state and federal funding that comes into Thurston County, and one of the things I'm really happy about in just in the last couple of years is we've established community advisory groups. There are three of them who advise the housing council. One addresses lived experience. It's made of people who actually have lived on the streets and who can tell us more directly what their needs are. We have one on affordable housing, and we have one on homeless services. I think, you know, it's taken a while to get this organization up and running, and the idea is that it will eventually become its own agency, but we are definitely collaborating as a region on this very difficult topic.
Thank you. You now will have one minute for a closing statement, beginning with Marin.
Well, I want to thank the League for having us here today. I am running for Lacey City Council focused on, focused on housing, seniors, and economic development. What we've done today is democracy in action. I hope we never lose it. So I want to thank everyone who is here in the audience, as well as those of you who are on, meeting with us virtually. I invite you to please come to my website, MarinTurner.com, to learn more about the issues that I'm working on. I'd like for people to see the endorsements that I have, as well as the grassroots support for the issues that I'm looking at. If you want to talk with me, I'd be glad to do that, because I love to listen, and like I said, I'm interested in listening to everyone, to get your voices. I think that's the best way to make good policy and to have budget oversight. So again, thank you, neighbors, and I look forward to seeing you, and I'm asking for your vote on November 4th.
Ryan?
Thank you. Again, I would like to thank everyone for being here, the League for putting this on. I believe that this is such an important forum for people to get to ask questions and to learn more about what happens at local politics. What happens locally affects our people every day, and I think it's the most overlooked area in politics, but it's also the most important. Again, my priorities are going to be housing affordability, expanding transportation infrastructure, as well as small business development, but particularly how all of those decisions need to come through a lens of environmental sustainability, as well as equity, so that way we can continue to lift up the most vulnerable in our communities to make sure that no one is left behind. We live in such an amazing city and an amazing region, and we should be able to all feel safe and accepted and a part of this community. Thank you.
Yvette?
Well, as a proud member of the League of Women Voters, thank you for putting this on and being here today. I am a candidate for Lacey City Council, Position Six. I am committed to inclusive growth, housing attainability, public safety, and transparent governance, to ensure that nobody in Lacey is left behind as our city continues to grow. I am somebody that usually stands behind the scenes. That's why a lot of people don't know me, but I've been involved with so many groups and agencies over the 16 years I've been here, and I really feel that this is a pivotal time on council and that my lived knowledge and my experience is something that I could really help bring to the table and continue to make sure Lacey is a great place for now and future generations to come. And please reach out to me. I am, my website, I goofed that up earlier, it's YvetteNumber4Lacey.com, and I look forward to speaking with you. Thank you.
Carolyn?
Well, first, I want to thank the League for this opportunity to address voters. It's so important in this day. I think it has been alluded to, we are living in rather troubled times, and those times call for steady compassionate leadership, which I offer. I have specialized in housing, transit, climate, and DEI efforts on the council. I have leadership roles within the community. I'm Chair of the Inter-City Transit Authority, I'm Vice Chair of the Thurston Regional Planning Council, and I represent Lacey on the LOT Clean Water Alliance, as well as on the Thurston Regional Housing Council. This is a time of rapid growth for Lacey. It's going to be fraught with a lot of challenges, and I think my experience on the council, I've grown greatly in the eight years I've been on the council, are needed to face what's ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all, the candidates, for participating in this. Thank you all, the candidates, for participating in this candidate forum. We thank our partner, TC Media, for producing it and airing it. We are indebted to TC Media for years of making these forums happen and educating the voters. TC Media is a nonprofit organization dedicated to making media production accessible to all. They're committed to providing our community with access to professional media production, education, and content creation resources. Your support helps provide studio space, equipment, and education for creators in our community. To donate to TC Media's work or to become a member, visit www.tcmedia.org. We're also incredibly thankful to the NAACP of Thurston County for sponsoring this forum. We encourage our viewers to be a voter in the upcoming election on November 4th, 2025. Every vote counts. Ballots for military personnel were mailed on September 21st, and all other ballots will be available on October 15th. You may register to vote up to Election Day. Thank you for watching this 2025 Candidate Forum.